Seven o'clock, I'll call a meeting in order. Regular meeting in the planning commission for Wednesday, April 23rd. Are there any changes to the agenda? Did you have one?
I don't know if we want to... Specifically note that we'll discuss the Gero subdivision. There's also another issue which could be in my report, or we may need a separate discussion, which is issues around the seed gardener property and potential violations of the subdivision permit.
Let's add it as a separate item. Since we received it as a complaint. So, let's see. Why don't we do that in subdivisions? Because it's regarding a permit issued, so we can do that. What do you think, first or set before? First or second? Under subdivisions?
Second.
Second, okay. We'll do it right after the Gero subdivision. That's not even spelled out. Formerly Boalik. All right, anything else?
It's all I have.
Hearing no other changes. Agenda is approved with those additions. We have three sets of minutes, right? One from the public hearing, one from the meeting that followed it, and then one from last month, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, does everybody have a chance to read them?
Yeah.
I noticed one error in well, must have been Marches. And Andy's name was on each two. So, I'm trying to get that right. I think that looks fine otherwise to me. Anybody have anything? No? That's good.
And I tried to find, I had one, but I can't find it when I looked for it again. It was sort of just a typo. A word was put in twice. Very minor.
Okay, in last month?
I think so. That's, I looked and I couldn't, I just, before I came, I looked, but I couldn't find it.
I can show you real quick if you want.
No, if you know where it is.
Not yours, mine.
Okay. This was from last month?
I think so. But I couldn't, like I said, I couldn't locate it when I reread it before I came here, so forget it. It's not important.
Okay.
It's just the same word twice.
And I didn't go back and look at the hearing minutes to see if they matched with the hearing decision. But I'm assuming that it is, you know. I'll, good, I'll take your word for it. If you didn't look at all the details. The hearing decision will kind of consider as the more official, but... All right, with that change, I'll move that we approve all three with one correction. Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye?
Aye.
It was aye? Okay, unanimous? Andy's still not here. Let's see, we'll go right to Faith's report.
Okay. I have received a very
Oh my gosh.
Substantial BCR, it's full
That's just one?
Yeah, it's, it's full master plumbing. They've included all of the Act 250 documentation, the surveys and everything. This is the BCR for construction of the shop and offices, which is fairly straightforward.
Where they've started, yeah.
But they, they did submit a significant amount of background information. I did also receive the BCRs from the Lit Wireless on Belmont Road for their garage conversion. And from Michael Murray on Route 103. Although that one, which is new construction, says that it's going to have a wastewater permit. I couldn't find one, I've asked him to give me details.
Which one is that?
It's, um, just going
It's the one that cuts right down there, 103.
Oh, yeah, okay.
North on one of those
We talked about last month.
Yeah, he's across from, uh... Yeah.
Yeah.
That other room.
Yeah.
Apart from that, I have nothing else.
Okay, I had a couple of questions and follow-ups from last month. Any update on the Anderson trailer? Is it Anderson?
Armstrong.
Armstrong, sorry.
No, I still haven't received a reply. I can write again, I don't have any phone number or email contact. I can perhaps send a registered letter this time.
So, are we inquiring about what the status is? Is that it? Or are we at the point where we need to analyze them, or what?
Well, it is in violation in the sense that it hasn't, it it has to be moved every 180 days.
It hasn't moved in over
It has not moved in more than
More than a year.
Three years.
Yeah, okay.
But in the absence of any contact with them, I'm not quite sure what we can do. I can, as I say, send another letter registered, so I can at least get confirmation that they've received it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, do you have, um... What does the ordinance say? What does the bylaw say?
The flood hazard area bylaw, it doesn't really refer to this. This is based on advice from Carl Medash. The bylaw talks about construction and development standards. It doesn't very existent, bringing in a temporary structure.
In what sense?
In the sense that
This is an unpermitted structure in the flood hazard area, so it's subject to the regulations.
Yes, but the details of how those are applied, as advised by Carl Medash, are not articulated clearly in our bylaw. This is based on his advice as to how you should deal with such construction.
And which is what specifically?
Which is that it has to be, effectively, the trailer needs to be ready to move at any moment. And that one clearly is not. And it needs to be moved regularly.
Well, at this point, it needs to be removed because it's now a permanent structure and it's not permitted because it hasn't moved. So you can, you can either be a permanent structure or a non-permitted structure. If it's an RV, it has to move, and it's not. So that's, any claim they have to it being an RV is over.
Well, it isn't an RV, it doesn't have an engine, it's a trailer.
Yeah. Or in the broad sense of recreational
To camper.
Comfort trailer. Yeah, I mean, we just need to move forward with getting it out of here.
I'm trying to remember where was this one located?
One down the
Tarbleville.
Right at the bottom of the hill, right there. It's two
On the banks of the river.
I'm just saying the river.
Only gets the ones buried in the woods.
Yeah.
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 I mean, I can then send a registered letter, but say that it has to be moved.
Well, they're in violation, they're gonna get fined, right? So what are the, I can't remember what the ordinance says, we'll have to look at that. But I think we need to notify them at this point that they are in violation. Like it's you know, sort of akin to the the junk ordinance, the select board gives them like, you know, some good faith time to like try to address it. This has been years. Have we notified them how many times?
Well, I've only notified them once.
It's only once?
Yep.
All right, well, maybe one more with registered letter?
I would do a registered letter, just something from my From all my deals, we're not sure what they're not registered with.
Well, we The paper trail that they've been notified is what we're looking for. Because they could just say, oh, nobody told me.
Yeah, we didn't get
And it may be true, I mean, sort of give them the benefit of the doubt. Maybe they didn't get the notice, and maybe they have no idea, but it's a little bit bizarre to be, oh, forget about something for that long. All right, and the other thing. Jim asked last month about the road that's being built off of 103.
Oh, yes, I spoke to Clinton Woolley, who confirmed that they have a permit from the state, even though I couldn't find a record of it. He said the permit was issued in Montpelier. For reasons that
Yeah, that's a state highway, so they, they issued the permit.
But it wasn't issued regionally. He's assuming that whoever it is went straight to the top. But they do have a permit.
According to Clinton, why can't we find it?
Well, I looked on the state record of permits, but I think it's either too new or
Okay, you just email the insurance or something?
I could do that.
Yeah, I might have to try, just to see what's
And my understanding is they're gonna be putting two houses up there. Yeah, if that road goes up and splits.
There's a condo.
Don't
Clinton also said that he had issued a town highway permit for an access from
Roger
Roger Hill Road.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay, interesting. All right. And you sent around, I sent, sorry, I think you sent to me and I sent around the fire marshal reports for Blispress. Do we have any update on that?
No, the only thing is that I noticed that there seems to be quite a lot of earthworks going on there. I'm not sure exactly what's happening. There are a large number of people possibly living there.
Earthworks means
It looks like they're cleaning out the foundation.
They're cleaning up, I don't know if it's earth, but I know like every time I drive by, there's like metal and there's, what, all the garbage and stuff.
Out of the foundation.
Yeah, of the old building.
Yeah.
All the burner stuff that was in it.
What's left of the building.
So what are you thinking on that?
I was thinking possibly a site visit, but I'm not sure I'd wanted it on my own, basically.
I'd say we should go with her, you and me. Hey, you is here, fighting with your fire handle. And the planning commission, you wanna do that?
No.
More than that, we'll have a meeting, so two is okay.
Yeah, the because they're not, you know, they're not burning anything, they're digging it clean. Basically, they're cleaning off right now.
What do you want, what do you want to determine?
Well, I would like to, as I said in my letter to them, they shouldn't undertake any construction without seeking advice first from me. And specifically that they should know, I told them that any construction in most of the property, and I gave them the maps of the flood hazard area, would be subject to state and town regulations regarding that.
And any substantial improvement to any building?
Yes, yeah.
Which is almost anything at this point.
Yeah, well, I said any Two buildings last year, and they're not.
Any, and basically, we'd have to be, you know, very careful. Any improvement on that, it's going to trigger the permit requirement because there's so little value there, right?
Yeah, and I did also alert them to the fact that there were two outstanding fire marshals notices of non, you know
Kind of like they condemned them?
Yeah.
A lot.
They condemned the building that had burned, but not this, was the other one condemned?
Well, two buildings have been condemned, but I don't know if it was the same building twice as in the one that burned down. I think it was the one that burnt down.
The one that burned, I don't know if that's condemned.
And
And the house in the back, I don't know how that one was reading.
Well, I think it wasn't that one, it was the
Longer one.
Bunk house. That was also condemned.
Could be.
And I also
The ones that were connected?
No.
Yeah, well, it was, it was one long building with
Three or four?
Four, four rooms and a furnace for it.
Yeah.
And I also sent them a copy of the permitting required, state permitting requirements from any public building because they have said on social media that they would like to try and reopen it as a hotel.
That'll be a while out.
They've said on social media? They have a social media page?
No, they sent it on the local, I think it was either Key Men Valley or Mount Holly.
So...
Right now, all I've seen going on down there is basically cleaning up the old foundation.
I might be worth going down, just verifying with them that they're aware that if they do anything, they need to have some sort of permit, or at least ask if they need a permit before we get into a situation where they're building something and we have to go down in time.
Yeah, yeah, that's the worst. We don't want to do that again. That's, we seem to keep finding ourselves in that position, but so we need clarification on which buildings are condemned.
Yeah, I will, um... I'm gonna check with Chad Farah, the health officer, because he was there at the second inspection.
Okay. Okay, a second. All right.
I'm sorry, folks, I got tied up with something that I couldn't get out of, so here I am.
No problem, thanks for joining us. We just start working our way through Faith's report, and we have a couple of follow-ups from last month.
Right.
And just, just for, I guess public information, we talked briefly last month about the board of adjustment hearing, you now have that set up. When is that?
We had it.
You had your public hearing?
Uh, no.
No.
We had the preliminary hearing. The preliminary meeting, the hearing is the May 14th.
May 14th. That's for the patch?
Yeah.
Yes.
The conditional use permit? Okay. All right.
And Faith got us in the paper.
Cool. All right, I hope it's
I should get confirmation tomorrow.
Right.
Let's see, any other, there was no other correspondence that you wanted to mention?
Nothing, yes.
You're gonna talk about, except for the seed gardener stuff? Anybody else have any questions for Faith?
I do not.
All right. Let's see, I'll move on to my report, I'll make it brief. I sent around information, I think today. The regional planning commission sent out some notice about some Act 181. I think it was 181 training. And they had a link to the draft future land use map, which was actually the first time I've seen that. And it was a little surprising that it didn't seem to match our future land use map at all.
Wait, so it was a future for the county or for all?
The regional, the regional future land use map. And it's a little surprising that I thought they would kind of consider ours or pull ours in.
Apparently so.
Or talk to us about it. So I'm gonna try to contact them, maybe even tonight or tomorrow. See like what's the story with that? Why they didn't just use ours more closely or whatever. And I'll just mention here, actually, I'll leave it till the, till item 7A about Cavendish. I think that's it. We had, we had an email though, I'm trying to think of what it was.
There were a series of emails about the distance of a septic from a house, which led me down to Rabbit Hill.
Oh, I just said it.
But
Okay, I can't think of anything else to report on right now. All right, we'll move into subdivisions. So we'll start with Gero application. Where are we? Mr. Gero's here, hello?
Okay, so we have in place the
I would just like to add that the wheels to that wagon were very slow turning. You know, my pursuit of gaining all of that information and all of that was very slow. That's why it's taken six months.
Yeah, I understood it.
Okay, so we have the application supported by the Act 250 amendment, which permits a subdivision on the property. We have the Mount Holly Town Highway Access Permit Form.
I included a little schedule in that too, that's all I really
Yeah.
Did with that.
And we have the wastewater permits. And we have the site plan of the proposed subdivision. And also as part of the Act 250 subdivision permit, we have details of wetlands and conditions around maintaining wetlands in any subdivision. One issue which I did raise with Mr. Gero was whether or not there had been any clarity on the boundary dispute between him and his neighbors. And in response to that, I received a letter from Chris Corsones, who's here online. And perhaps I should ask Mr. Corsones to respond on that issue. But apart from that, from my perspective as administrative officer, all the paperwork is in place to, for, for me to forward it to you as planning commissioners.
Can I see the application? So we have a, is it what we call a sketch plan, or we have
Get the larger maps.
Okay, I'll just recognize the application that Mr. Corsones is listed as the agent, so is there anything you'd like to add? At this point, either of you. We haven't really looked at it yet, but anything you'd like to sort of preface?
Okay, the driveway, it gets treated differently with the state because it's not really a development until somebody comes in and they're going to do something. There is stated in the permit itself that there is no construction to do with this permit. Anyone who comes in and buys a piece of property or anything, they want to do anything from this point forward, they have to go and do, and amend as I just did. What made mine a little bit more tedious was the fact that I needed to get a shared driveway agreement in place with my neighbor, which was probably two months of my time trying to chase in them and get the signed copies, you know, certified copies and all of that stuff to get that for Act 250 to be able to be included in that permit. But as far as the town's access, you know, Clemente gave me the whole front part of that, second of that, that parcel right there, there's only one place it can go because of the wetlands delineation. And it's gonna, it's gonna go right up along the border of the Norton property.
It would go here.
Now, is that the existing driveway that goes out across there?
No, that's not even on that parcel.
No, that'd be
That parcel's the one that goes up by the shop. That one's that, the distance for, you know, forever. And that's showing the other map on that other parcel, that parcel too.
Okay, because I knew that one was there, but I didn't know how it was falling into place.
See now, if you look at the stonework on that boundary of the, of the map, it indicated that one, that probably in an ancient period that that had a lane that came down from the, from the woods because the stone wall had come down to the edge.
Which one are we talking about right now? Can you just
Is there possibly, is there possibly that
In the actual survey map of that, it shows the stone walls, and then they disappear on the one leg. I don't think it's shown in mine because the stone wall's more in existence on that one. But if you go to this map over here, the one that comes from the that, Gary took that one, yes, Gary took that one straight from Charlie's survey. And if you, and you notice that their stone wall is evident. No, this is the one that I think
That's good, that's from your
I didn't.
Highway access permit.
But Charlie's permit shows when they surveyed that piece of property with this side over here, because that one acre is attached to this side of the road. And it showed the stonework and the, and the, when they took this piece, that stone wall extended completely across the front. Which is why I always contended that that's where the boundary marker was. He destroyed the stone wall, he took the stone wall out, and he filled that whole lot in. So there's absolutely no way he couldn't have moved it because the stone wall doesn't exist there anymore.
Could you possibly zoom in on this? Get your plans, like, see where the proposing
Is there a way we could put it on the table, Peter, to make this here?
Absolutely, where do you just, just pick a spot in the middle where no one's head is?
It's a clear shot, we need to hear it.
And, yeah, can you move the laptop? I think the lap, the, yeah, the iPad and your back. If you could slide it around tight to the other side, it's perfect.
Andy, these
Is that okay, or is the laptop
It's eight, it's blocking.
These maps were sent to you during the last meeting. I've definitely sent these around.
Pull them towards you, John?
What?
John, pull the maps towards you.
So I don't think anything actually shows the access right now?
No, it's just, it's just that little, that red sketch. That's the only indicator of where it's gonna come off from. That was the part of the Mount Holly. I needed that access delineated.
Right.
So I put it there.
Okay.
I can't build it until I go through Act 250
Right.
To amend to get the permit to build it.
Right. And the access, the shared access agreement, the driveway access agreement you were talking about?
It's already recorded.
Is for, is for this?
Correct.
Through your mom's old property, is that what it is? Through your parents' old property?
Yeah, this was all that are, all my parents'
Everything.
Everything was a part all the way around here.
This is one that was sold fairly recently, right?
No, that was, I don't know, when did Russ put that in?
Well, but it was sold, it was sold, it was sold fairly recently, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It just sold.
Right, right, okay. So that's, that's who you established a new agreement with? The new owners?
Correct.
And that's an access lot?
Here.
See, what they're doing is they, they called the original lot one.
And this is
The original full lot was delineated as one, and then they made that two, three, and then four.
Then this one's the one that has the house on it, or that's wasn't in this, this is the map that's being divided. And here's the access.
Well, this has a house, it's just not his.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
But they're calling this
Parcel.
They call that, they're calling that parcel two.
Two.
In the state, they call the whole parcel one.
Yes.
The whole thing. And then after it's divided, they made it two, three, and four.
Could I, could I ask someone to put the thumb on the drawing and show?
Parcel four, parcel three.
So it's just the side of the
We couldn't hear you, repeat yourself, please?
Yeah, Faith is kind of half-blocking it. Is, is it just to the side of the 1.12 acre holding?
Right here, anybody got it?
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, the stonework that show up in that map. I did come up with some delineated footage or pictures that would identify quite simply the aerial views of that side of the property. And it clearly shows, there's a spring. And that boundary line is just the other side of that spring. And when they put that in, I don't know why they didn't do it in a different fashion. Because that piece of property that Gary and Laurie are on right now was originally referred to in the original deed that Carol brought out here as one square acre. Now, my parents' intent was to include that well on that parcel of land. And why? There was no physical location to that one square acre. That was the only language that referred to it. Was that one square acre, they should have just set it over 10 feet. Because that's all it needed to go, was on 10 feet to include the well. Kept it to one square acre, it matches the verbiage of the previous deed. This now, if another surveyor, if another surveyor came in and went off of Charlie's deed, they can't trace that to that by any way, shape, or form. Because there's Because there's absolutely no reference to stone walls, trees, rocks or anything. It's simply referred to as one square acre in the northwest corner. So that's why, you know, my folks did this, but what didn't, what didn't occur was when Gary and Laurie took that piece of property, they never did a boundary line adjustment. Because he just took that map from his father's, father-in-law's, or Carol, you know, gave him that copy of that map. And I don't know where they got the language for it. Because it doesn't match, if you go back to the previous property line or the previous deed to that parcel, it's, that mountain block is only mentioned in Charlie and Janice's deed on the other side of the road. But I've always, I'm rather disagreed with the fact that when they put the land down there and they moved the boundary line over, it physically changed the deed, so it's not one square acre anymore.
Hey, Bob, Bob, this is Chris. Now stop for a minute, would you? I, I'm not sure why you're going into such great detail on this particular issue. Does the planning commission have the specific concerns any longer? I mean, is this, is this fruitful?
Uh, well, I, I mean, I was.
Well, Faith's not on the planning commission.
Yeah, I was certainly seeking information, so.
So I'll, I'll jump in, so. No, that's fine. John McCann here, I'm the chair. And, yeah, no, we didn't ask for that at this time. We didn't ask for that information. I think we're just discussing where the proposed access is, which is a requirement of our regulations, which is clearly important to distinguish that they are, I think we all understand that they are different from the requirements the state has for their subdivision. We recognize the state did not have requirements for defining access because development isn't proposed at this rate. For better or worse, our regulations do require identifying access as a prerequisite to subdivision. It's, I happen to agree with it, but it's sort of here and over there, it's a requirement. So what we are trying to get at, and I think, you know, you have done an important step here in working with Clinton to get that permit. And we're just trying to understand a little bit more precisely where it is. Sort of sidebar on that is I was trying to understand the plot itself because it's a little bit interesting and I think you started to address it. It's a little bit different from any we see, it's starting its count at number two, if I understand it correctly.
Right.
So this is not yours. And we're talking about two, which would be the first, three, which would be the second, and the rest.
Right.
And that's what we're talking about.
And I think what the state did was the state referred to as the entire parcel. When I started, as one.
Oh, wait, maybe I'm wrong.
No, it's parcel four, remaining lands.
Okay, so for the state's purposes, this is what you're proposing? This is your preliminary plot for us, right? This survey? Okay, the state, for whatever reason, called the largest lot Lot One. So it's a little bit confusing, but we'll.
Well, I think that.
No big deal.
That is inclusive of the entire parcel.
Oh, is that right?
I believe that's what they did, the entire parcel before anything got separated was one. And then they did two, three and four because of the three parcel subdivision.
They numbered it differently.
They just numbered it differently. Okay, well, we'll just recognize that. I think where, from my point of view, talking about access, for your access for Lot One, we're gonna call it, we're gonna go with this one. We're gonna call it parcel three. Your access for that is to the existing barn?
Correct.
Okay. And for your lot?
And there's a lane that goes alongside the barn.
Is there there, Chris? And then you have your agreement, which is, you've recorded it. You've recorded it in the records, your agreement, okay. So we're really only talking about the largest lot? Four. And I think where, that gets a little interesting. And probably does start to involve the discussion about boundary lines. Is that it's proposed to basically go right along your boundary line, the access, right? Okay. This is my, one of my questions. Is doing that going to cause any friction, litigation or whatever with Mr. Norton?
As far as I'm concerned, after discussing it with Chris, the survey reflects where the boundary lines are.
All right, but there is, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a pin in the ground there in that corner. There, right?
I don't know which one that they referred to that they might have found because two of them would have been covered.
Well, I saw one, I think, as I drove by.
You know, and if you pull up the maps on this, it's like the back edge of this roof is right along the boundary line.
No, I mean, we're.
We see another one over here.
I'm talking about the corner where you're trying to get access.
That's, that's right here.
Yeah, the well is, and also let's just clarify this. The issue with the well that your neighbors were initially concerned about is no longer an issue because you have no interest in putting it there, right?
Well, that's, right, I can't, that's all wetland.
Okay, so that's good, you settled that.
And that's right here.
So now we're talking about this side only, the opposite side from the well or the spring. Is, is there a monument there?
No.
There isn't?
No. Not where it's supposed to be. Let's say, yes, he did, they took that monument out and they moved it down to this piece of the stone wall that was remaining. But the monument would have been, their line doesn't even come all the way to the trees on this side over here. And that stone wall that they buried in there to fill that lot in was where that monument was.
What's the rebar set?
So when they went and they did my survey, they, you know. They don't really, they're just verifying, you know, the location of pins.
Rebar to be set, that's rebar found. Rebar to be set. Rebar found, rebar to be set, rebar found, rebar to be set.
Okay, so I, I don't know if this is gonna be an issue for us, but just so that I understand what you're saying. It's your contention that someone removed what I believe was Ralph Michael's survey pin and moved it to a different location after he set it?
Yes. And that's what, that's what I, that's why I wanted to bring this picture down because this is after he put his house in, there is no stone wall. Monument was in the stone wall. So it can't be there because he removed the stone wall.
And Ralph's survey was done before this building existed? Is that?
Yes. But see, this was, it didn't look anything like this.
Let me ask it a different way. Is your proposed access between your monument? Is it in the contend, the contended area? Is it between the two monuments as they exist? Well, the one that will be set and the one that is in the ground?
It probably will be, part of it will be in that. You know, I'm assuming that I'm gonna have to do some kind of a buffer along the edge of that road right of way. You know, Clinton had specified like a 30-foot right of way up through there for a roadway.
30-foot road, all right.
Yeah.
Did he say whether culvert was necessary?
No, no culvert was necessary. Yeah, right, and from that, there was no culvert necessary.
Okay, so, all right, I'm gonna set that one aside for, at least for me for the moment. But my next question is, what do we do with this information? That is a 30-foot wide right of way? And I don't know if you can answer this because you haven't asked the state this.
Correct. See, I know that, I know that it approaches on some of these physical barriers. These are the 50, I think these are the 50-foot buffer zones.
It says here.
Potential.
Potential future 50-foot wetland buffer.
Yeah.
Okay. And delineated wetland is already there.
And the information in the permit that I looked at, they told me that I just needed to confer with them and work with them on doing that.
If you did anything there.
Yeah. All right. So it would require, if this is to be believed, it would require filling in Class II wetland to gain access to that parcel from that location?
Not really, no.
No?
It's gonna come up and it's gonna be right close to it.
It's gonna be within the 50-foot buffer zone.
It'll be in the buffer zone, maybe.
By the looks.
But they've got this, they've got that wetland area pretty generous. You know, I maintain all that land, I've lived there my entire life. And I, there's, you know, when you live around that kind of land, you just know that there's times you don't go in there. But I kept it all my whole life. You just don't go in after a rainstorm.
I mean, that, so I think that's. Yeah, I mean, there's Class II. So this existing access drive here comes well into the meadow here, right?
That's the one that comes up alongside the.
At least if I'm looking at this correctly.
It comes all the way up to the barway, that's where we used to get into the fields, access to the fields the most.
And the field, that's what parcel one would be for.
That is all part of this last parcel which surrounds Gary and comes, and it's.
The blue, the blue line is the.
So it goes down into the woods to here. This is all just wildlife habitat out there. I hardly ever go out there, but I get to enjoy, you know, frequent visits from all of the creatures that live there, so.
Some of them look pretty good, too.
They taste pretty good, too.
I've seen one or two of them.
So have you considered an access here?
No. I haven't. I mean, if it became an issue and it needed to happen, I could. But I prefer to not have to penetrate that parcel with a right of way for that other lot. Trying to keep them all separate. So I don't have the same thing happen like what happened to me where I had to get all that documentation for a shared drive. Because that's actually the only, the only dry access I have to this area in here that would be where I could do anything. Basically, that area there was all just pasture. And I had never heard of this area that they're calling, the, what do they call in that corner down there? That's all man-made. That whole corner down there is man-made.
That, which are, what are you referring to?
This whole, all this drainage, the pond, everything right there is all man-made. My folks did that back in the 50s and 60s. It's been pushed out a couple of times.
And what, what are you saying? You don't know what it means? What, don't you know what it means? Oh, this archaeological site?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how it got identified, is that its first I'd ever seen, been identified?
That's part of the, they send out their experts to look when it's in Act 250. Just when I think, you know, the way they also do the mapping for Class II, that's their standard. And your intention is to sell, not develop this, was to sell this?
That's all I'm trying to do is get it sold. So the ownership around the Norton's, yeah, I'm planning on heading to warmer climates. So. But the holdup of this little bit of an incident down here, now I'm still gonna own that land after the subdivision occurs. I'm still gonna have to deal with Gary and Laurie. But I can't do anything with any of that until I get the subdivision complete. And then I can tap into my retirement earnings.
So you are retaining some of the land then, or no?
Well, obviously, it's all mine still. Until it goes on the market.
Okay.
But see, what I have is throughout my life, I've never had all of my shit in one barrel. And now that, my stuff is now shared between this barrel and that barrel. And once that barrel's gone, it's all gonna be in that one barrel. And I can deal with it all at once before I go. So this parcel, as soon as I get everything dealt with there, and that parcel with the house will be the first two on the market and I'll probably keep the other one with the shop and my toys for a couple of years. You know, I thought that because the state had already warned it for the 10-day, or the warning period, you know, that nobody spoke up, so they should have been all ready to go.
Oh, you got your Act 250.
The Act 250, it has been, it's already filed.
Yeah. Chris, would you like to?
No, I just, only my question would be clarifying our process. What's the next step?
Yeah, so I think once we have the understanding of the plan and the access, then we'll go through our checklist and see if we're ready for a hearing. I think that's the process. Faith has decided that it's complete. I think it's still, it's still an interesting idea that Andrew had to consider an access to this larger lot through the drive that basically goes to it already. And that would, I think, maybe work around some of the Class II.
I would much prefer, since I've already done all of this paperwork, I've already paid all of the fees for all of the surveying and all of that stuff already. I would just as soon keep it where it is because.
Well, there's no survey of the drive.
Well, if I have, if I have a right of way put into that, then it's gonna have to be identified.
It's not gonna be surveyed.
You know, and quite frankly, that doesn't do anything negative to my subdivision, which is all we're really dealing with here is my subdivision, not what potentially can happen. I'm looking to parcel out my piece of property into three pieces.
No, understood. Yeah, so, you know, we try to do is make sure that the access to those makes the most sense. And.
Similar to like you can't end up having landlocked land the past years ago, we're trying to make sure like it's not going to be a piece of property that somebody's gonna buy and not be able to have access.
Right, but the language that I read from Act 250 is that that buffer zone is negotiable. They can be, that can be done.
Oh, well, yeah, sort of what they do is not our.
Yeah, and not even especially. They could build out here if they wanted to.
Well, that's exactly where that goes, is right there.
No, no, I'm saying on the roadside.
So the lot, we're calling it this one, your shop. You, you expect that those buildings will, there will be another, somebody would most likely put a home on there. Another structure, right?
It's, very likely, if there's places for it.
Yeah.
You know, all of this stuff, as you get up along this stone wall here, you know, it's all, it's all kind of nice land.
Yeah. And your concern about the shared drive is that the difficulty with constructing an agreement around it?
Correct. Yes, then you end up with, I've got good neighbors right now. And I've gotta talk to the caregiver of that piece of property. It is my suggestion from doing that myself for 35, 40 years. Is in terms of that one driveway access now for his, for his purposes, it becomes three driveways. We have one section of shared and then we each have a section of our own. So if he was to come in here and plow, this has nothing to do with town. But when he does maintenance on this driveway for both places. Anything from the term down is shared. All that one is all them and this one is all. And I used to deal with them kind of things all the time and it was fine.
Right.
As long as it's cleared and, and in the.
In terms of land use planning, it's much preferable to have one shared resource than to have multiple, you know, roads coming through it. Especially when we're talking about wetlands and prynag and stuff like that. Is, was the driveway? Yeah?
I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, may I just kinda talk about more about what Bob's saying? The way I see it, and I think what Bob might be trying to say is really legally, anybody can put anything on paper, I can certainly draft shared easement. The problem is practically speaking, the problems that it can cause. And I think that people looking to buy a property like this would just much prefer to have their own. a property like this would just much prefer to have their own access and not have to rely on having a, a, a neighbor that is like-minded and won't cause problems and disputes and not pay their fair share, or do too much, or damage the right-of-way or something. I, I think Bob's idea of separateness, I think that's his idea of separateness is separate is better for, for persons that are owning the land and, and using the land.
In a rural setting.
Oh, I, I don't dispute that at all. I mean, that's, that.
I mean, I, I don't disagree, a shared driveway in a community setting. But, you know, that's where if a development came in and.
Well, with subdivision, we look at. With subdivision, we prefer to have, especially with one that does not have the kind of lots that make that single, house, single driveway easy to do, a shared drive is, is preferable from a land use perspective. And there's a number of constraints here that sort of seem to point in that direction. That's why we're having this discussion about it. I lost him. We.
It's not us, 'cause you can see Andy.
We lost, we lost you there after you said Bob's not gonna do it voluntarily. That's all we heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I, what I was saying is, if, if the planning commission does have the legal authority, I, I, I'm not an expert on your subdivision and the ability to do it. If the planning commission has the legal authority to require a shared access and they do decide to force a shared access, then Bob will obviously comply. But I don't think he's gonna do it voluntarily, because he wants it the other way.
Right, understood.
Not in parks in that manner. Ultimately, they could build like hell on their own side.
That's, that's not, actually, none of these are a big deal. Because you've got access coming in here, you've got access for there, and you've got access for over there.
It would all depend on what, like Bob said, yeah, it would all depend on whoever, where whoever wants to buy it, wants to build in Act 250 more than likely would give somebody.
And if they wanna build over here, then they'll have to figure out how to get through 250.
Well, and that's why, that's why.
And that'll be their problem, not yours.
That's why I brought that boundary in here, because it brings me into an area that'll easily access the rest of this.
So it's a.
But it's not an approved driveway right now, is, am I correct? Act 250 has not approved the driveway.
Act 250 has not approved it. I, I, the requirement of the planning commission was that I get a road access. So that's what I did.
And I mean, he does have a road access, even if they wanted to build on that little tiny parcel, that's built on that side of the road. Or on that side of the wetlands.
So, so one thing that's important to note here is that we sort of are waving our hands quite a bit with, oh, that's up to the future owners, which is not strictly true, right? So any future owners, before they even contemplate construction, will have to come back and get it amended.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's why it does make sense.
Anyone advise any one of these parcels is gonna be standing in front of you with their plans.
Right, so let me finish. So we have been in this situation multiple times before where the failure to have even just a basic understanding of like where it's even possible to build has really come back to bite us by either creating lots that don't make sense and needing to be completely redone. Or, like we're gonna discuss actually next in the agenda, where we didn't, I think, do certain things in our initial permit that we probably should have if we had known. So, you know, we're not trying to pin you down. Obviously, you can't predict the future, but like sort of understanding where the possible building sites are, where the possible access is.
Now, where are they?
What's that?
Where are they?
Well, that's what we're discussing.
I divided that parcel like that because I had an interest in just the ag land, and I just wanted to, what it's got on it and get the A. That's why a lot, that's why them lots look like that. But to make me have to go through all of these hoops and delay me to go through all of these hoops, there's no way to know. There is no way to know, because one person can come and say, I want it all, even though it is three lots.
Well, right, I mean, that's.
And then all of this, all of this has been in for naught, right?
Well, no.
All I'm saying is.
If they buy all three lots, they can still build houses on three lots.
I'm 14 months into this, you know? I had submitted all of this documentation to Faith prior to the, you know, first part of March. The one permit I was anticipating.
I don't need a chronology. I, I, trust me, I understand.
You know.
Okay, so let's go back to the actual thing. I don't really wanna do any more discussion of, of theoreticals here and process. So I'm, I'm getting a better understanding of the possible access to this larger parcel. If there is an issue with a wetland either being not able to be traversed or not in the town's interest to destroy, it looks like we do have a, another access through an existing road. Does anybody disagree with that? Seems like we have a second viable access to the lot. Andy, do you agree with that?
I do.
Okay, well, as soon as I, that's all I really wanna get to, and then I'll, I'll cede the floor to, to you. Are we in agreement that it looks like there are two possible accesses to this, this parcel, even though they may not be per, permitted?
Yes.
All right. Andy, you have another question?
Yeah, and I apologize, 'cause being remote impairs my ability to follow what's being pointed out on the maps. But my question is this. Is Mr. Garrow proposing two new access routes from the town highway? One to the west of the Norton lot along that property line, and a second one past the existing barn on the, what's marked on the map, isn't it? Existing access drive, is that? Is that?
The access is not the west. The access would not be on the west side of Norton's. It's on the north side.
Oh, yeah, northwest side.
Well, all right, northwest side. But yes, that's putting aside whether it's west or northwest. That's, I clearly understood that was one access point that was being proposed. But that's access to one lot, and I'm not seeing where the proposed access is to the other lot.
It already has, the barn already has access to the road.
Then it's, it's had roadfront access for 30 years, 35 years, 40 years.
Okay. Okay, so. The presumption is the barn would be, or somewhere nearby would be site for dwelling. And would we know? Or the presumption is that would we be accessed through the wetland?
To reach here or of that.
There already is. I've looked, right? Existing access drive. Correct.
You've got.
I, I think.
Access across here somewhere.
Four lot.
I mean, there isn't any currently.
Calling it the proposed parcel two or three.
I haven't proposed anything like that, because I go right in front of the house. It sits up on top of the hill.
But you were talking about you shared something with somebody.
No, for the existing road from Packer. I had to have an agreement for Act 250. I had to have written an agreement with them for that.
Okay. All right, so I think, Andy, the access to the barn is pre-existing. I think that's the answer to your question. And Mr. Garrow was not proposing to use that same drive to access the largest parcel. But we, we are saying that should be left as a possibility. Should it be undesirable or impossible to access through the access that has been proposed and permitted through the town at the northwest side of the Norton property?
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
All right, so I think we have enough information to ensure there's access to the parcels.
Actually, the best way out is somebody buys both these parcels and the issue goes away.
Pretty much.
I'm just saying.
There you go, Steve. You can buy it. You can buy it.
I can buy it? I can buy it?
I mean, the person who buys both of it, still resell. If this is approved, subdivision, still.
Again, now I'll come back in front of you at that point in time.
And that's their problem. That's their problem, yeah.
Well. This, yes, and, and it's not your problem, per se, what they do, but it's our problem, because there's often an issue with an owner not necessarily knowing they need, that this isn't permitted for building. And.
That's one of the first notices with this Act 250.
With Act 250.
They have to be notified.
Right.
On sale.
With Act 250, it's different, because you, I believe you've had to put something in your deed or.
Yes.
Right, and there's a realtor notice as well, I think.
Yes, so, I mean, I am surprised that I wasn't aware that that Act 250 permit wasn't gone. I was of the assumption that it was on the business that was in the building. It's been gone for 10 years. And when I became aware, to me, in Jan or June of last year, that they had attached, you know, the, the permit to the entire parcel.
Ownership, yeah, right. So the majority of what we do here is catching up on, chasing down things that people don't know. That's like, unfortunately, the majority of our time. So it's where we try to like head these things off as much as possible. So, all right, I think we're ready to look. You have something?
No, I just wanna get some clarification, 'cause I'm a little confused. The yellow lines, if I'm reading this right, is, it says.
Class three, is that?
Yellow was class three designated.
50-foot buffer.
Yeah.
It's a potential.
No, the, the orange is potential. The yellow is no. So there's potential, and then there's.
All right, there's the yellow. Okay, so the yellow is, they're saying there is, this is what they're saying is potential.
Yes, yeah. Then this up in the back here, this is all wetlands in there.
Okay, now I'm starting to, okay, I misunderstood.
And the majority of the time, this is dry as a bone.
This, this, however, is already delineated. So this here, and this is a very straight line, which is interesting, 'cause it made me believe there, you said there might have been historical road there or something, but this is already mapped, wetland. It's very unlikely that wetland is no longer wetland. However, it's more likely that, so any, by the, by law, anything that touches a wetland that is hydric is also wetland. So like, that's why they put this big buffer sign.
Yeah. Then I understood. I was just, I missed, I was getting confused of the two colors, and I just read it upside down.
I don't really, I personally don't know what, how they distinguish potential to mapped or whatever.
I know.
They, they put a lot of roots on the ground.
Yeah.
That was rather expensive endeavor to have them go out there and walk the property and delineate the maps and get the, the areas and locations and.
Oh, where, I guess, where I'm gonna do a checklist?
Yeah, so, okay.
Of course, you could hide it, put it on the ground.
Andy, are you sure?
Is now, because the way the state grabbed this, I'm subjected to all of that, but none of these people around me are. Right? So it's like, what makes my wetlands any different than anyone else who's around me?
Okay, I missed, I missed the question.
It's not irrelevant. It's irrelevant to anything to do with this movement.
You've just got sucked in.
The wetlands, I was gonna go to that other property down there where he's cut a pond.
Andy, do you agree we're ready to look at a checklist?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
This is the proposed plan, yes?
Yes.
All right, this is the most recent revision that we're looking at? There has been, there's been no updates after, after 250, the date of recent revision? Am I looking at the revision date, or is this the original date?
5/16 of 20.
I know, was there a revision date?
Well, Faith had called and asked for different levels of the map, because I had created these and didn't get these. Well, I had submitted them before without the elevation lines and stuff on them, and which you called, and asked me about having one without all of this on it.
I asked for the, the, because this is just the wetland, I'd asked for the proposed.
Right.
Sketch plan of the proposed.
That one was completed. They didn't do anything to it, because nothing else happened to it.
Okay, long story short, right, long story short, we have the most recent revision of.
Yes.
Okay. And we have our blocks.
Yeah, that's the proposed. The existing is 57.
Plan references one and two.
One.
Oh, this, this all refers to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, 51, that's what that says. All right. Let's just go over, we have our blocks. Yeah? Planning Commission and Clerk. Okay. You have the acreage per lot.
Yes.
All right, do we have?
Numbered blocks. We have them numbered as well.
Okay, we don't have wetlands.
It's, it needs to be on this one. Right, this is the plot that they're submitting.
Yeah. Are there? What is purple? Oh, that's 'cause they just didn't study this.
Okay. But this has the map ones on it, the division lines are on that one as well.
Yeah. Do you have, are there any streams or just?
There is no moving waters.
No moving water, okay.
Just let it fall out of the sky.
So we probably look back.
Well.
Wetland.
Yeah.
Well, class two wetlands.
They have elevation.
Elevation's there, the pond is there, that's good.
The archaeological.
Probably do need that, 'cause that's like a definite no-go zone. Everything's numbered, right?
Yes, the five, the three.
Kind of crazy scheme. Can we just redo that? Yeah, one, two, three. That should be easy enough.
I do have to match what Act 250 did. And they approved it.
All right.
I, I agree, it's weird that they went two, three, four, but.
We don't have the. All right, so this is a little bit of a weird thing, so.
Just, sorry, just on the numbering. Whilst this has got lot numbers on it, the text doesn't actually mention lot numbers.
It doesn't mention lot numbers?
So I don't know if that helps in.
All right, maybe we should just go back, 'cause this one, this one is a totally different numbering. I, I prefer to just start with one.
That starts with one, right?
Yeah.
So look at that. That way they go together. That's got the wet one.
I mean, it sort of makes sense to follow these, I would think.
Yeah. So what's the next one? You said it was weird.
Oh, so, yeah, 'cause, do you, is it your opinion that the well, we'll call it a well. This is, it's actually like a spring box, right?
It's a spring.
Yeah. Is, is on your property?
It is not.
It's not, okay.
It is not.
All right, well, that's good.
It is not, and that's, that's why I wanted to point that out, was I finally realized that there's a definitive feature on that border. You know, if you walk into his yard, you know, about 16, 18 feet from the corner of his garage is the spring, and anything that's on my side of the shop, my shop side of that,
Yeah.
is my land. His, but that boundary line goes right there.
But as, as you had it surveyed?
As it's shown right there.
The spring is on their land.
The spring is on their land. It's, it's actually referenced, I think, in that one.
Is it?
I don't see it. I've got shed, foundation, outbuilding.
You got that little one. I saw it on one of the, we still have it.
Well, if, if it is, I think it would be nice to show. Well, if, if it is, I think it would be nice to show so that there's no dispute about it.
Well, it's because of the intensity of the wetlands on this side over here, nobody in their own minds would try to go through there anyway. Well, that's pretty much self-protected here. Nature preserve that water supply.
Although the beauty of having them put the well on this map is going to show like that is on their property.
It's, it is where it is.
But moving forward, if somebody was disputing.
Yeah.
How like this, how this was drawn, the well is on their property.
I'm pretty sure it is reflected on one of these maps.
Okay, well, then that makes it easy to add. So, let's go ahead and add that too because we have a requirement for water supply. I believe your other, your, yeah, all your wells are already on here.
Yeah.
Are your, do you have, apologies that I should probably know this, but you have deferred wastewater permits for these, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there's no existing wastewater at all for the barn?
No, that has its own wastewater permit.
Oh, there is?
From the, from the Act 250 days.
All right. So, but this, for the largest lot, it's a deferred?
It's a deferred language.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, might I just add something on that? Because I'm just clarifying it for you. There is no deferral of permit anymore, hasn't been for 20 years or so. In other words, you don't apply for a deferral of permit and, but it's, it's automatic by law. So, a deferral will not be reflected in the land records until such time as Bob issues a deed to any potential buyer. And at that time, because this is a subdivision, got nothing to do with Act 250 because WW permits are different than Act 250. But when, when Bob issues a deed, because it's a subdivision and because it does not have a WW permit, the law requires Bob to put in his deed a paragraph that references the fact that the lot is being transferred without a septic system and in order to build any structure, a septic system, a septic permit must be obtained by the state of, from the state of Vermont. That, that's how the deferral works now.
Do you have the wastewater permit? So, okay. So, if I'm hearing you correct, so the, I haven't checked, the wastewater rules were updated this year, but I, I think they still have a requirement for subdivisions to require an amended permit, correct?
That's what I just checked, six months.
Oh, if there, yes, if there was, if there was in fact an existing WW permit, then a subdivision would trigger, would, would trigger the requirement of a WW permit amendment. But I don't think there are any existing WW permits, so each lot would be required to get its own when any person that attempts to build.
Well, but that's, no, but there is, there is an existing, so we have one lot today which has at least a one, probably two wastewater permits.
I was unaware of that one. It was in the shop.
Right.
For the original Act 250 because there was no wastewater permit in there.
Okay.
We weren't allowed to have.
All of the confusion aside, it looks like we do have the proper.
Permit.
Authorization for subdivision from the wastewater.
Correct.
Regulators, okay. Well, that's good.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
There's one on the house.
On the house, on a lot.
There are apparently two.
Numbered two.
One for the existing home.
They all have them now.
And for the barn.
They all have them now.
They both.
The wastewater deferrals are recorded with the town.
Okay, right. And so, therefore, and I think this is where Mr. Crosons were, I think, agreeing, but in order for this amended permit to be issued, a deferral for the large undeveloped lot was needed.
It's language, no, when I, when I talked to Ann, our wastewater people, she told me the same thing Chris said. There is no wastewater deferral permit.
Okay.
It's deferral language. They, they were authorized. They're full of language.
Visa, visa, this permit.
It results in a permit, but it's not.
So, what are we calling this in the permit? Oh, God, this is the one that starts on 2, okay. So, this is, this is probably the plat that was submitted.
Parcel 4, yes. So, we're going to use these numbers then.
All right.
Right?
Because all of these maps had to be submitted to them.
So, here, here's what I call a deferral language, right? So, here, in item 1.5, Lot 4 and 3 are not approved for construction at this time. Any deed for these parcels shall contain the following language. That's what I'm calling a deferral.
Well, that is a deferral, but that, but it's not, you know, it's not a permit that the state.
This is a permit that is necessary to subdivide land, and it's also required by our permitting process.
And it's got a deferral language in it.
What? Okay, well, I think we're all agreed.
Right. Number is the same, so they match that.
Uh, sorry, actually, I had not read. So, the numbers are parcel 4 is the 51.79.
We're going to scratch out renumbering because that's going to just create so much of a headache.
This is 4.
So, Act 2, the Act 250 is parcel 4 is 51.79.
Yeah, that's, that's nonsense, so I don't want to look at that anymore.
Parcel 2 is 5.35 acres.
Yeah.
And parcel 3 is 13.66.
So, we are going to stay with the numbering system that's used in Act 250 and in the wastewater.
And on this map too.
And on the plat as it's presented. So, let's just stick with that.
Cause of like.
This, this is a different numbering. That's fine. We're not going to look at that.
I gave you the utilities access.
Um, hold on, I just want to check. Yeah, all right, we're all good. This is all, this looks all in order, so. Okay, good. I thought we were running into, we didn't have a permit yet. All right. We added the well, the.
Yeah, the archaeological site and wetlands.
And the archaeological.
All the buildings, okay. All right, okay. So, now we're moving back to, we do not show, all right, that's what I was going to look at. Sorry, Faith, I'm going to grab this back. It says, um, so, okay. What I've heard is that in the process of going through Act 250, you discovered, or someone discovered, there was a permit, a wastewater permit for parcel 3 that you didn't know about. And that's not reflected in the wastewater permitting. Is that correct? Did I, have I heard you correctly?
They don't know because.
It's slightly unlikely because it's an old building, but.
It's a barn.
Yeah. Well, see, and the wastewater permit was a non, it was a non-use of water. It just told us that we couldn't have water near. The only authorized water in the building was for keeping the boilers pressurized. So, they authorized us to have a pump and a water station in there because our wet system, you have to have pressure feed to the boiler.
Okay, so.
But I mean, I have a number in my original Act 250 permit referencing that, but I would have thought that when it went through the wastewater department that they would have, they didn't even mention anything about an Act 250 permit because they issued them back in April.
Okay. And you have no, you don't have no water supply for the barn?
No, just the, just the one that was for the boiler.
What is, what is that supply?
Just the girdles.
Where does it come from? Where does, where does it come, it comes out of?
Their well?
The pump, used to feed the cows.
This pump? Or you just pump in and out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The water that went into the troughs.
You're not connecting to the spring or anything?
No.
Okay. All right. The reason I'm asking is, um, we would want to see, similar to how you've done Lot 2, we would want to see your wastewater and water supply for this lot, but we do not have.
Don't need it. Don't have it.
Yeah, we don't have it. Never had it.
So, there, there may be a leach field somewhere that is not permitted, predated the permitting.
Predated, yeah. It would have been built in the 60s.
All right. Is it, you have, you know of it?
I thought it was about that big when they put it in.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Of course, I'm not that much bigger now, but I'm a lot older.
So, usually we say we were this big when they put it in. All right. All right, so I think we can bypass that requirement. What do you guys think? Normally, we show it. It's old enough, probably. Functionally, it probably doesn't have a waste system.
Right.
Like, so anybody buying this would probably not be able to.
It's not being advertised with a waste system.
Okay, all right.
You know, it's a storage building or if somebody wants to, I mean.
Well, you're not doing the commercial work in it now, right?
No, it's been my, it's my private workshop for 10 years.
All right. So, let's.
We were, that's what our permit was. We were authorized to use a composting toilet.
Okay.
That's what we had in there. In fact, it's still out behind the shop.
All right. All right, so we're.
Should be dried up by now, I would think.
Oh, you never know.
I think we got contours. Um, we talked about we're going to add wetlands.
Yeah, I forgot a list.
All the buildings are shown. Marshes, we're going to just consider class 2.
Yeah, I spoke there, I remember.
Yeah, I don't think we need to get intentions wrong or definition. Um, so.
We have Nat people showing in the past. I haven't gotten really high.
We have, sort of.
Could use a lot like that one.
I'm not, yeah. We could probably do something like. What are they calling that? That's the mapped?
This is the wetland, the delineation.
This, they're saying basically all this is wet.
Yeah. I was looking because there's two separate maps supposed to be here. So, I think one just reflected the, yeah, the green lanes.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
I think, so we have a couple of different requirements than a wetland. I think we're going to make this easy, in my opinion. Once we get through all these, we'll, we'll sort of vote on it. But, um, I think we can take this yellow line here, and this part, we can sort of.
Woodyland is shown on this map as well.
Woodland, wetland.
You say that again, John.
So, instead of trying to get into too much about what's woodland, what's wetland in this, I think we're going to ask to show the class 2 wetlands. Okay, those are primarily along the road. And then this area, it wasn't really studied by the state, but they've said that it's, it's, it's wet. Like, they're not even going to bother looking. And the fact that it's wooded, woodland and wetland, I think we can just have that drawn on the plat and it's.
Well, the state, the state wouldn't draw these. These were drawn by TCD.
Whomever the state required.
They, they authorize them to do that.
Right. So, I think we can just use that yellow line. That'll be probably the easiest.
Cleaner.
Cost-effective, simple.
Cleaner, neater.
Meter, okay. All right, I think we're, facilities and utilities.
Nothing proposed, nothing.
No, it's, it's already there.
You've got your utility right easement on here. Okay. We're, yeah, okay.
You can show along the road where it comes.
Yeah, that power line goes down across there. That goes down to, what's it, Cavendish? Chester.
Which holds the road right away.
Now, I think that, that power.
Those are utilities.
Oh, the high utility, the high. Not sure. I think that was the Mount Holly transfer station for the.
That was it.
Okay. I think it does.
He's told her, we talked about.
No, because he goes down, comes down, the cross on 103, right down here.
That's not the one.
Are there any deed restrictions when you place?
When you go by the transfer station or the transformer up there, look in that little field that I'm at. And you can see it, and it heads right up like through Hawkins and right through my field. It's the feeder for that, that transformer pattern. I think it is on.
Okay, is there, yeah, go ahead. Other than the utility easement, are there any other restrictions or easements or other issues that we should have indicated? So, utilities, are there any other deed restrictions?
Nope, not that one.
Okay. I think.
Made it to the list?
I think we went through the list. And we are, we are representing here. Actually, we probably do need to list it. No construct, it probably should be in the little box. No construction proposed. And then this one already says existing house, so that's, all right, that's fine. All right, so to summarize, you want to do it?
Yeah, so what we have that needs to be added to this map by.
Before hearing.
Yeah, before hearing, is you need to have mapped, include the wetlands where they are, and the wetland woodland, which is in the lower corner. So, all class 2 wetlands need to be shown, these here and this wet woodland on this map, as well as archaeological site in the corner.
And you're, you're talking to the commissioners?
Yeah.
Because you're going to ask them.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I just want Robert to, anyway. The, adding the wetlands, the wetland woodlands, the archaeological site, the well on Norton's property, and the, um, adding the verbiage in that there's no proposed construction for these two lots in the boxes here.
Correct. Well, there's no proposed construction on any of the lots.
Do we want to show that?
Well, this one already has.
Already had the house on it.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Driveway?
We probably want to show existing drive and proposed.
Proposed or possible?
Possible.
Possible, yeah. Better than proposed.
And then the existing.
That doesn't commit you to anything.
It was already on this one.
Yeah, existing.
What do they call it? Existing access drive.
Yeah.
And that we were, we're based on it.
So, adding in the possible drive, the existing drive, the verbiage of no proposed construction.
For lots 3.
And 4, yeah. Woodlands and wetlands delineation, so all the class 2 wetlands marked, and then the woodland, wetland along that yellow line that's shown in there, adding in the well, that's on Norton's property, the archaeological site in this corner as well.
Yeah. So, that's a question to the commissioners. Does that sound right?
Did Chris get it all?
Well, this is a question for the commissioners first. So, Andy, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I wonder if it would also be a good idea if the plat includes some reference to the Act 250, just as a way.
It predates it. Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea. Probably in the references or the notes. I think that's a great idea. Is it good for you?
Yeah.
Did you have something to add?
Just, uh.
All right, so we're in agreement about that? Okay. Without any further discussion, if there's no other questions about that from either you or Mr. Crosons, we'll ask you to add those to the plat, and I think then you're, you're ready for a hearing. So, hopefully that should be welcome news.
Finally.
Any questions about that? Clarifications? No?
I don't like the way they do the microphone.
No, we can, I was going to say, prefer to see it corrected.
Yeah, normally what we do is we, especially given the fact that surveyors or whomever, I mean, you'll need a surveyor to do some work here, it's very difficult to get them to do a week turnaround.
They don't have to come back on site to do any of that.
No, they don't.
It's all on their computer.
Right.
These guys that I've been working with up there have been very responsive, and it's a matter of just a few mouse clicks to them, they know.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way. We have a very tight turnaround to get this to a hearing in a month, but. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way. We have a very tight turnaround to get this to a hearing in a month, but there's two ways. I mean, one is we can have you come back with the updated paper plat next month and we get the sign off, we give you a sign off or not. Hopefully, these are all pretty straightforward. You can do without any, any further feedback. And then we schedule a hearing and then you make milars. I don't, offhand, know whether, whether the cost of a milar is more than a paper version. I don't.
They're neither relatively cheap. I have them send me a PDF and I go to Staples.
Right. The other way is that we can try to schedule something today and then there's a bit of a rush. So, and then there's always the chance that we get to a hearing and it didn't meet our expectations for these changes and then we do it and then you have to pay for another hearing.
If I just get a copy of that, I'll just take a picture of it and I can get on the phone.
So the pros and cons are, one is faster, but you might have to pay for a second hearing, which would be an additional cost by another application fee. To do, if, you know, we can't do the hearing as expected. I, I don't really care either way.
I just wanna bring this to conclusion.
Right, but you have to be comfortable that they'll be, they'll make the changes in a timely manner.
And if I can get, you know, the things that I need, then I can call him tomorrow morning.
It needs to be, in that case, if you're going straight for the end, the goal, you need paper version and two milars.
Yeah. Would you like to send?
Is there anyone that can review if I, if I get a copy or we send a PDF, if someone can review it? And get, and say that these are agreeable?
We can't review things without a meeting. So we can do that. Yeah?
I mean, I know Mr. Garrow has waited a long time to get to this point in large part because of the state's process. I, I would be more comfortable that we have an opportunity to review what is submitted to us as a proposed final plat. And we make sure that it's correct before we schedule a hearing. Because it just creates pressure on us and, and a risk of even more pressure if, for some reason, the new plat isn't, doesn't have everything, then it has to go back again and then we're in a real bind. And I know Mr. Garrow's eager to move this along, but it's a difference of yeah, it, it might not even be a difference of 30 days. I mean, we can schedule a hearing immediately after our next meeting.
Who do you guys think? Yeah, yeah, well, let's ask, let's ask the rest. Let's ask the rest.
I don't care either way. I mean, I think that it would be smart for whoever to make sure we go through it and make sure we don't have any screw ups. Because if we get to hearing and we're, we don't restart the whole process, we're gonna have to pay again for the warning and all that stuff. But I don't care either way.
I don't care any, either way either, but I agree with Andy that, you know, if there's some, if there's a screw up in there somewhere, you're gonna end up paying for it.
Steve, yeah?
I'd rather see you not have to pay more than you have to.
Steve?
I'm willing to go either way, but what you both are saying is something, if there's a hiccup, it's gonna cost you a lot more. And this way, it's only costing you like roughly an extra month.
I mean, not even a month if we do a hearing immediately after the next meeting, because you have to wait more than two weeks.
It, it, functionally, it's about a month. It's so difficult to get everything into the paper on time and it's, it's quite a rush as it is.
And for, then you gotta do the letters to all the neighbors.
All the neighbors.
They've already, they've already been notified with all of this.
Well, you gotta tell them when the meeting is.
The hearing has its own.
The hearing, I'm sorry.
May I be notified for the hearing?
Well. Do you have a specific deadline that you're working towards here?
No, I just, I just wanna get this out of my head and I wanna be able to start relaxing in retirement.
Right, I think we're gonna look at this at the next meeting. I have a bunch of caution. I think actually end up being the faster route.
And it'll be safer for you in the long run.
So at our next meeting, first thing, if we have this, well, we'll leave this in advance at the meeting in paper and PDF. We'll be able to review it lickety-split in the meeting and then we'll, we'll get a hearing scheduled right there for you.
Because I think TCE, or Bowman Company now, they got bought out by them. They reference in their contract that they won't do the milars until the subdivision is approved.
That's another way you can do it. But I can't sign anything and you can't record anything until we have a milar. So we, we can technically make a decision on the paper versions, but you won't be able to act on it until it's recorded.
Right, I'm just, I just know what I, what I saw in my paperwork from them.
Mr. Crostones, you understand that, right? I mean, that the fastest way will be to have the milar at the hearing. That way, we'll have our, probably the next week, we'll have our deliberative session. Usually, it only takes us one session to, to decide. We write it. We've been able to turn it around pretty quickly in the past, within the month. So, yes, it's, long story short, if you don't have the milar by the hearing and you have the paper copy and you certify to us there will not be any changes between the two. And that's one of the reasons why some people require the milar to be present, because you're acting on that version. I think we could probably allow the milar to be generated after the fact, but it's, it is unusual.
You can live with this, don't you, milar?
Correct. And that's the reason that you want the final authorized.
Well, what I can do is I can just talk to Eric and I'll say, look, you know, this is moving along at this point now. You know, how long is it gonna take him to generate the milar?
Should be just a printing thing.
You know, like I say, they're the ones generating that and sending it down.
So I think you have two options there. Our preference is to have the milar at the hearing, because that's the actual survey. Paper versions are convenience.
Yeah, that, that's the way we'll do it, because you will have already approved the paper copy next month. Or not, but we'll, we'll know one way or another. And so they'll prepare a milar without your approval. They'll just put a stamp on it that's, that, that gives you a place to sign it.
Okay, that's what, that's what usually happens. I don't know. All right. And then, and then upon a decision, if it's granted, then, then I sign it and then you send the permit and then we record the plat and then you're you've got parcels. That's the way that works usually, so.
Do we wanna have Faith email in what we need updated on it? Just so that we have the list.
Can I just take a picture of it?
Yeah, you can.
You can read my.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
You can read his inscribed.
Good luck.
Yeah, exactly.
Can you read it?
It would be worth doing anyway.
Yeah, well, and she'll.
You're free to take a picture. Faith will send you that list as well. Do you have the list?
Yep.
Just so we have a record.
Okay, you're gonna send that?
Yeah. Email's fine, right? Emails are there?
Any.
All right, I think we're moving along. I think we're set there.
Yeah, we beat this horse.
Yeah, right. So we're on track, we're on track here.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna take up so much of your time.
No problem. Good night. All right. Next.
A little shorter.
Well.
Don't speak so soon, huh?
Okay, Andy, I don't, you weren't here at the beginning. You added an item to the agenda for the Seagordner.
A boy.
Yeah, Seagordner. So a prior subdivision approval at the time of this Bilalik, currently owned by, at least in part, Tyler Seagordner?
Yeah.
Okay, so there has been a complaint by one or several neighbors that they may not be in compliance with our permit. So Faith has some information.
So the complaint was related to stakes that were placed on 155, which looked as if they were precursor to access.
What is it? This, okay, this is the property.
Yeah, let's, do we have the plat that is on 155 where the gentleman was building a six-bedroom?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Are we all aware of that?
Now I know, right?
Okay, we all know it. Andy, you're familiar with it too?
The former Bilalik.
In general, yeah.
Okay, yes. Do we have a paper plat? In the file?
There will be one, but given how those files are organized.
Yeah. It was, if I remember correctly, three lots.
Yeah.
One for his.
Two for the ham and one for Bilalik.
And then one for Bilalik's son or something, and then the two flats and the one guy bought both.
Right.
So the the complaint was related to this, what looked as if it's gonna be an access road, which is about, I think it's 40 to 50 yards north, towards Cuttingsville, of the current access, which is Jack Frost Lane. And one of the permit conditions was, and I quote, "A vegetated buffer should be maintained between Vermont Route 155 and the overhead electric and telephone right-of-way, which runs along."
Those are our permit conditions.
Yes, that's, that's the subdivision permit conditions. I wrote to Mr. Seagordner, who said that he had a state, he had the state's permission, which he has now given me a copy of. He also said that it was not going to be a straight shot in, it was somehow going to be curved. I'm not sure that this actually helps to clarify that. And so from his perspective, the visual, the vegetative buffer removal, which would be required, wouldn't cause a problem. However, he also, in his, the state permit, shows that the proposed route for this drive will also contribute another of the conditions of the permit, namely that there should be a thirty, sorry, a natural riparian buffer of at least 50 feet maintained along the stream flowing roughly east to west across the subdivision. So the stream, sorry, Andy, you might not be able to see this, but the stream runs across here and the proposed driveway goes right through that stream. So.
Of course it is.
So, so whilst he hasn't satisfied me particularly on the vegetative buffer along 155.
That's sort of where the stream is.
He has also raised, in giving me this, he's also raised concerns about another aspect. This also suggests that he's already done some clearing around that stream and already not maintained the vegetative, the riparian buffer. So.
It sort of leads me to believe that with adding a road in here, I mean, it looks like he wants to clear and do more. I mean, why would you need a road in if you're not gonna like use it?
Well, he might, he might be putting that road in for the second house that's there.
This one?
Yep.
Wasn't there three houses?
There's already.
Where's the six-bedroom? This isn't the six-bedroom.
Yes.
There's the shop, which they didn't tell us about initially. That's something that I was referring to earlier about the representations changed. Even, even, even the current owner's representations changed along the way, so, okay, well, we didn't.
There was also a change in his proposal for the, the six-bedroom. It is no longer a single property. It is effectively a kind of condo, as I understand it.
I think he called it a duplex.
A duplex. Two properties.
Oh, this is the.
To reconstruct?
Yeah, this is the access for the duplex to be constructed out here.
Yeah.
New residential access.
So that's, yeah, there's gonna be another old house in there.
Yeah, that's what.
Do the neighbors know that? So let's just, let's just go backwards a little bit.
Wasn't there, with the original subdivision, wasn't there one of the parcels that was approved to have two houses on it?
Well, the way that I understood it is they combined the wastewater systems to be.
One house?
So they had two, my remembering, my remembrance of this is that they had two wastewater systems that they sort of merged in order to get enough flow to put a much bigger house in.
Yes, I recall that, yes.
And there was a whole hearing.
So now they wanna put a house out here where they've cleared or even right up to the neighbor's property. Pretty much by the.
It clearly says to be, unless they mean the access to be.
It's the access. They've already constructed.
Okay, so the duplex.
There's already another house out there?
Yeah, yes.
So how do they access it?
Besides this one?
No, there's, there's a sec, there's his house and then there's a secondary house out there.
Where's this?
Okay, so this is the Jack Frost Lane entrance. This is the shop.
Yes, and then there's the house.
And then this is the house.
Yes, but this is going out here for new residential access to.
And she needs to have his fingers on the other one.
This house, which is.
Instead of coming up Jack Frost and going in this way or this way, I'm not sure which way the road is.
The Walter Seagordner residence.
And why do they wanna discontinue the existing road?
And we're like sure that that is not a driveway for a new house?
I mean, it sort of doesn't.
It looks like it's a driveway.
It's still a driveway in an area that we expressly said should not be developed, partly because the neighbors didn't want any of this. And the owners at the time said they didn't want any of this.
This state permit, what's, who'd they go through? Does the state take it?
The seller, the original owner, did not want anything like this. So we have, we're all in agreement that that boundary between the proposed construction and the neighbors would be maintained in its natural state.
I don't think that brook is in our, shows up in the river corridor, right?
I think it is as well.
Quite certain it is.
Yes, it is. We looked at it the other day.
Which we expressly said.
But it's the 50, 50-foot.
Yeah, but they're just talking about going across it with the driveway.
Yes.
Which is, would be a state issue on top of us saying, no, you can't do that.
Well, it'd be a town issue with our regulations, but I don't think the state.
Plaguing around in a water stream that size?
Yeah.
The state's not gonna have a problem with that?
Oh, they probably would, but, well, I, there's a state, there's a new state river corridors that I don't think has gone into effect yet, but right, there are, there's almost certainly some state regulation on them.
I mean, they're either gonna have to have culverts or something to cross it. They're not just gonna put a water crossing in.
Okay, but I think, let's, let's take this one step at a time. The, the, the vegetated buffer along 155 looks to me like it would be relatively obliterated with any construction. Can I see the map again? So it's already pretty much non-existent. As you're, correct me if I'm wrong, you drive this stretch probably much more than you probably do.
About every day.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't get down there that often, actually, so from here over, is there anything?
Here, you can see this, but when you get down here, you can't.
There is a thin, but consistent vegetation.
But there, there is a buffer from this point on, but not so much from here over.
Right.
Okay, but it looks like they're proposing to push that back even further.
Well, where are they gonna, where are they proposing to put the driveway in?
I don't know. This, I mean, according to this, this is what they're saying.
The, the proposal is to put the driveway in here approximately. The proposal is to put the driveway in here approximately.
Would you ask for those cars parked there or is that...
Yeah, it's probably, they wanna put the driveway in there and then go straight across.
Up here and then go across the river, stream, over to here.
That's why I'm saying, why, why are they going to here?
It's complicated, why are they doing more than that?
Well, there's another house.
I mean, it's, everything that we didn't want.
So, they're building another house.
No.
No.
You don't know that.
No, we don't, we don't know that.
Don't be jumping to conclusions.
We don't know that. I think what we know is they, they want to cut into the buffer along 155, which, okay, maybe it's not that much, but it is, it is something.
Well, I don't understand.
Considering that there's actually not much of a buffer here already, you know, it can be sort of argued that they, they're kind of already, they, so, this easement, this right-of-way, they're already cutting into it. See all this driveway? It, what was, we were told was that this would be the road, access would come off of it. They decided to just pay, essentially, you know, pave or gravel the whole thing, right? So, if you, where does the line come over? Right to here, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So, they, they're already, they've cut this whole corner out of what we've asked them to keep. And now they're telling us they wanna go all the way over here and basically get rid of this whole stretch.
Well, I don't know if they're saying the whole stretch, they're saying the...
Well, that's a whole half.
Feet. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no way you can keep any trees right there.
I mean, and if they put it in there, it's just gonna be all that much more enticing to clean this out. And if you go by it and drive by it, it doesn't really look like that anymore.
It's like, it's just like paved all the way.
It already does.
I mean, this is already cut, I think.
Yeah, this is already just a row of trees right here.
And that's what we kinda didn't want. We wanted that to be naturalized all along 155 up till Jack Frost Lane. From the, from the right-of-way of the utilities to 155. And so, they're already encroaching on that. They're encroaching on the naturalized fifty-foot buffer. And now they're asking to put a road across the stream.
Yeah, this is the stream.
That's the stream.
Okay.
Yeah, because that, that says to the duplex to be constructed.
Because you remember when Mr. Bilalik was talking to the neighbors about this? He says, "Oh, you know, I've cared for this property. I assure the neighbors that this is all gonna be very tasteful, that we'll keep the vegetated buffer." I know the neighbors have all talked to me personally and they're not really happy about it. And that's not just the ones that are on that side.
Yeah.
This has gone way beyond what we were told it would be. And I can, I can understand where they're coming from. I think it's one thing to like sort of let go this.
There's a little, yeah, trim job here, but if they're starting like that.
Talking about like going much farther, I think we, I think we need to tell them that they've gone too far to the stream already. And that they, they can't go farther.
And this, it'll go drive by and see.
I mean, they've got the house, oh, with the touchscreen. So, they've got the house that, I mean, they've got more houses in there than we even thought there would be.
Well, which house is this? This is not Bilalik's.
That's his house.
That's his father's house.
Oh, okay. So, that's the second property. This is the first property that had authorized to.
Yeah.
So, but then they used, to reiterate, they, they used the second house's wastewater permit to build, to make larger house here.
Well, I think it also combines whatever wastewater.
It is now or will be.
It, it is now.
And what's interesting is the gateway that they built to get into their property area now.
Yes.
There's two big concrete pillars right here with posts and a headpiece.
Well, now with Bilalik, it is his property.
There, there's two big concrete posts there, about four foot square. They stand about that high, right here, this right-of-way. They stand about that high. There's two posts go up about sixteen feet with a headpiece.
Faith, did he buy all three lots or just two?
Yeah, two. Just two.
Just two, so he can't really block it because that's to Bilalik's sons or whatever house, the third cabin, that third lot.
Jack Frost Lane, you're talking?
Yep.
No, that...
What do you mean block?
Well, you were just talking about him putting a, two pylons in there to...
Yeah. You haven't seen them?
I haven't been down that way.
There's two big concrete blocks. They're about sixteen feet apart. They stand about that high. They go up with posts up about sixteen feet with a headpiece on them.
Oh, it's just, it's just a...
Like you go, use to go to a ranch.
Yeah, a big gate.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, okay. So, where are we guys?
What, what, what is... Sorry, just to clarify, when I asked him, saying, what are these stakes for and are they for a road? I clarified that this vegetative buffer was to be maintained. He said, "Why would it violate the conditions?" "The buffer is to be maintained. The road access permit was approved by the state and it's a driveway, twenty-foot access to house." "The access is not a straight cut. It's an S, so the power line is not seen from the road."
Power lines wasn't the issue.
Power lines are part of the road, are part of the side of the road.
What does, what does the S have to do with anything?
It's not even an S anyway.
Well, yeah, I think, I think that very, very tiny little...
That's just going to the two skinhouse, but that's a straight line.
But I don't understand how that's relevant to anything.
Well, he thinks that the issue of the buffer will be maintained.
Does he think the buffer is to protect the people on the road from seeing the power lines?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's not at all what it's for, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's to keep them from seeing him.
Okay.
Well, and that's, I think that's what you said.
Very, very, there's a misunderstanding here. Cutting a new road in, by definition, is going to cut into the buffer that's pre-existing. We agree on that?
I'm limited to that, yes.
Okay. And we agree that, at least as it appeared on Faith's map, they, they may be, there's a real likelihood that we have it here too. There's a likelihood that they are encroaching on the naturalized buffer on the stream.
Currently, yes.
Currently, as, as depicted on the aerial. Okay.
And they're proposed.
And the proposed would drastically go beyond that.
A few of our town bylaws.
Okay. So...
Plus, there's not a number for another house anyway.
I don't even wanna get into the house thing.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't promise that.
That bridge, alright, we won't go there.
So, okay, we have enough for you to send a notice to them? We need to discuss this further.
I can, I can send them a notice saying that from our understanding, they've breached the permit conditions in these two existing ways and their proposals would reach them further.
Does it make sense to get on-the-ground verification of the clearing that's occurring and how, the distance to the stream?
I could, yeah, I could do a site visit, ask him to show me specifically exactly where this is all going and clarify why it goes to the corner of a neighboring property rather than to the house that already exists.
Why wouldn't you use the KISS principle, just come right across the crossroad?
Yeah, I can't answer that. I think it probably does make sense to get more than just satellite view data.
A little more information about what this road's for.
Well, so... I think we have two probable violations of the permit. One is probably minor and something that on its own probably would not raise to a level of meeting.
Yeah, their little turn.
Action, the little corner that they've cut into.
You might see it differently.
Does it look very...
I don't know, I drive by, it's getting down pretty good slowly, a little bit at a time. There's just like a strip of trees.
Yeah, very small trees.
Yeah. Well, so that's one and then the other is the proximity of their clearing to the stream. And that's separate and notwithstanding the proposed additional construction. So, that's, yeah, I know.
I didn't know if we had any money.
Yeah, we should.
Does that stream go down through them two ponds, if I remember right?
No, below.
Okay, because then there's another stream that goes down through those two ponds.
I'm gonna call, this is...
Am I crazy? Is he practically trying to do a subdivision?
I don't know.
Not yet.
So, let's, let's, okay, do this one step at a time. Alright, I'm gonna move on here, because we, just, it's getting late. Really briefly, Cavendish, this evening, held an informational meeting for their new subdivision regulations. They're moving fast. Leaving us in the dust. Which is fine by me, but it gives us something to look at. The proposed, I don't, I'll, I'll try to follow up with them on how it went tonight. Their proposed regulations are on the town website. Check it out. I'll try to get, if I can get my act together, I'll send you guys a link for it. I haven't reviewed them in detail. They look like they're mostly boilerplate. It, it doesn't directly apply to us because they're going with a DRB model. So, our town has the Board of Adjustment Planning Commission model. They're going with a DRB that's gonna handle all of their development review. So, their planning commission will just be like writing town plan bylaws and that's what's happening, no review. Anyway, we can discuss that next month. I hopefully will have a chance to look at it in more detail. Public comments? Yeah, 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 no, I was like, wrap it up.
Starlight meeting next Monday.
Oh, that's a good public comment. There is that Starlight meeting Monday at...
Oddfellows Hall.
Seven?
No, no, next Monday is the...
This coming?
Community Center, I think.
Huh?
The Oddfellows one is gonna be the following meeting.
Well, there's two meetings about Starlight?
Yeah, this, this one is an informational meeting about the
Arrowwood.
Arrowwood Report.
Okay, and there's another one?
A month later, there's gonna be another one, which will be held at Oddfellows Hall, so everyone can go out and see the Starlight.
Okay. Alright.
That's my answer.
Okay, next meeting?
Funded.
This meeting, I think, was not at its regular time because of the holiday last week. Next month, we'll go back to our usual, is it the 21st?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Just a... Alright, meetings are adjourned 9:03. Thank you very much.